If we could have everybody take your seats, please. We're gonna start again. We have, we got a quorum, okay. Charlie, did you have more that you wanted to bring up? Okay. Well, I want, I wanna make sure everybody has an opportunity to speak, including us. Okay, one more time, folks, if we could have everybody take your seats. Get order, please.
You can't be louder than the speaker.
I know, I'm trying.
I hear you fine.
I'm trying. In regards to what Dave Eubanks said, I don't disagree. I don't know that we're gonna get a resolve tonight. But everybody came here wanting to speak in favor, against, or whatever that may be. And I want to give everybody a chance to do that. I don't wanna cut anybody off. We try to keep it at five minutes and have the discussion back and forth. The questions, the concerns, the answers, whatever the case might be. Whether we make a decision on it is our, is our decision, I guess. And we'll, we'll do that farther down the line. Okay, I'm trying to keep this, those that are for it, those that are against it. If you are against the project, I would welcome your comments. And if you'd come up to the podium, please. This may be short.
That's the second time you've asked for that.
I'm done. Pretty much done.
Which?
Go in one.
Anybody in the neutral?
Hang on. Larry's coming up.
Thank you, Larry. My name's Larry Bear. I live at fifteen Brentwood Court. I was born and raised in this valley. I totally agree with Charlie. I think there's too many unknowns. I, if I'm gonna get surgery, I want a doctor that's done several operations. I don't wanna hire somebody that's never done a project like this. Or the fact that they may sell it off two or three times. How do you know that people are selling it to have financial responsibility and can carry through what the demands are? So I am totally against this project.
Okay, thank you, Larry. Bill, I have a, I have a question for you. If by some chance this is approved and, and Citula decides to sell it to somebody else, does that necessitate another permit to be filled out and approved by this board?
The last item makes me say that transfers to the successor.
It transfers to whoever buys it, okay. Anybody else on the board that wishes to speak for or against this? Come on up.
I'm Don Lees, twenty sixty-eight County Road seventy-three, Bridgeport. Only have one quick question. What kind of solar panels are you gonna use?
They're gonna be the bi, the bi-facial, absorb sunlight from both sides and they'll track the sun, right? To basically optimize, optimize the capacity. And they'll, they'll be able to go to hundred percent vertical if there's a hailstorm blowing through the area. And hundred percent horizontal to the extent that there's some wind event. Although, you know, if a tornado flies over the site, who knows what would happen? But the bottom line is, I don't know the brand name, the brand name maker at this point. And then, assuming you ask me this, the battery technology we're looking at, are the mega, are the Tesla Megapacks or something similar? That's what, that's what I'm told.
Okay, will you use the cadmium, tellurium, tellurite batter, uh, solar panels or the silicon? Do the, do you know which solar panel technology you're gonna use?
No, I'll have to get that.
Okay.
I think the newer style are coming out with silicon.
Is there anybody else? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. And entertain a motion for either approval, denial. I'm gonna give one-third option would be to table this and, and bring it back at a, at a future meeting.
I'll make a motion to deny the permit.
We have a motion to deny, is there a second?
I'll second that.
A motion to, second to deny the permit. Is there any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I guess.
Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, given my thoughts yet. So I just think a couple things. From the very beginning, when I heard about this project, I considered it as if it was a economic development project. And when I heard of it, I thought, I would think that it would provide some economic incentives. They weren't asking for money from any, any TCD or anyone locally. But I will say that I know there's a, I'll use the term as the lady did earlier, a flood of federal money that gets given to some of these projects as it's applied for. And I know it's done part of what some would think is beneficial from a climate change standpoint, which I don't agree with. Or some of the issues of how we get electricity. And I am concerned that this type of solar project, I'm not sure it's any better than our coal-fired plants that we've had, had for years. But we're, in my opinion, we're not being asked the question of, are we the people that's responsible to confirm or verify the viability of this project? We don't do that with any other building permit that I know of in the past. We, we're not asked to verify whether or not a particular business, whether it be wherever it is that we have jurisdiction at, are they viable or not? We don't know. I don't know the answer to that question. And I, and we didn't ask questions to find out if they're financially viable. I believe this company, their intent is to invest in this property and make money. Now, I hope that the, my concern with these kinds of projects is that making of the money sometimes comes from that flood of federal money. And I hope that the project is viable otherwise. Even with, I know it isn't exactly without that money. It has to have that money to make it work. But we have not been asked to verify whether or not this project is viable other than to me, the issue of protecting neighbors, protecting the immediate environment during a decommissioning process. And some of the commissioners brought that up from the very beginning. And I think that has a major impact in how we should be thinking and some of the things that could happen here. This is a big project. Are there, Scott, are there other projects in the state of Nebraska, solar projects that are of this size?
My understanding is there's seven, there may be more at this point, but seven utility-scale solar projects under, in various stages of development in the eastern half of the state. And generally speaking, you know, around the Lincoln and Omaha areas. And I believe there's one that's larger than four hundred megawatts, that's larger than Citula. And I think the other ones are maybe two hundred and fifty megawatts, something, maybe one fifty. The other ones are smaller. So yeah, that's what I, that's what I know on that issue.
Appreciate it. So as was said earlier, there's certainly many solar projects that are being built. And I think that what we have to ask ourselves partially in this process is, is this a, a type of project that we want in our community with the potential benefits and possibly some potential detriments that are involved? Quite honestly, we can turn down the permit. And then, does that simply mean that they go across the county line to Banner County? Does it mean they go to Sioux County? Does it mean they go into Wyoming? Where, what does it mean? But certainly, we're not the only, only location. Now, I realize that it has some benefit because of that transmission line is right there and that causes it to be favorable, I would believe. But I do believe that we have to look at, what are the benefits versus what are the detriments for our county? And I'm of the opinion that, I don't think that we're quite there tonight as far as having all of these conditional use items written into what we have. We, we talked about way back there about getting some professional help. And we did by hiring the, what Marvin?
Consulting.
Consulting people. And they've given us some information. We also talked about the thought of having a attorney to help represent us because this project was more than what Dave would have the time to take a look at. We haven't done the part on the attorney. And I, I wish that we had, but, and still could, I suppose. But I don't know exactly what a vote tonight would mean as far as if we say no. Does that mean that we're suggesting to them to come back with another request? Or is that simply saying no for the whole thing? And quite honestly, it may turn them away to a different direction. I don't know. One of the things that hasn't been mentioned tonight, but I heard just this past week, that the city of Gearing's gonna be involved with a, with a solar farm right here on the, just southeast of the, their sewer lagoon area. And that there'll be one there. And so I don't believe that they're such a terrible thing that, because they're working in other places. And I, I believe they, they could work here. And I would ask, if, if a group of people came and you were all in favor of that group and you thought that everything was just wonderful with them, then I would ask, where would you suggest for them to put it? And I'm suggesting that you couldn't ask for anything better as far as the location is concerned. And so I would only throw that out there. So I would, I still consider it an economic development opportunity. I'm not sure that I would say that we're ready to say that those conditions on that conditional use permit is fully the way that it should be. But it's getting close, in my opinion. And I'm, I'm not of the opinion that I can just say absolutely no. I would be on the side of saying yes. But with possibly a little more time, the table thing that Dave has suggested, to make sure we have the, any other conditional use things ironed out. And there's no doubt that, as I think even Charlie said, we don't have the expertise to put all this together. We've hired one company, an engineering firm, to help us design a lot of those conditions. But in simple terms, that's kind of where I'm at. I think we could get to the point where we could iron out whatever conditions. And then, the, the question really might be for someone is, whose responsibility is it to, to test the viability? I assume it's maybe someone who's providing financing, if anybody is. I'm assuming it's a little bit the owners of the property. So I, and I assume there's a great big one here, and that's WAPA, that would have an interest in that. So there are several that have far more interest in the viability of the project versus us. We're interested in that, but I don't think it has to be the absolute highest in the priority items. So to that extent, I would be in favor of a tabling of the lease. And that might also, if there is an issue, which I, legally I have no idea, but if there's an issue with the application, we, that I think could get ironed out, I'm assuming fairly quickly. So that's where I stand.
Okay. One thing that I have maintained since we first started all of this, we have two things to concern ourselves with as a board. Does it meet the zoning requirement? Is it, is it detrimental to the adjoining properties? Okay? Those are the two things that we have the power to make the decision on. Who's financing it? Not our problem. Not our problem. I think the, the concern that the fire districts are bringing up are legitimate concerns, and I think they're being addressed. But it's also, it's also in the conditional use permit. We are not going to rewrite our zoning regulations through conditional use permit. It's not going to happen. I don't disagree that we need to look at them and do something different for the next project that's coming up. And yes, this is probably one of the largest ones in the state of Nebraska. We oughta pat ourselves on the back that we're, that we're allowing it to happen. If it, if it's allowed to happen, I don't know. Stay in the lane. Think about the two things that we need to concern ourselves with as a county board. Does it meet the zoning requirements, which it will? Once all of these have been met? The second one, is it detrimental to the adjoining properties? And if anybody can come up with any reason why it is detrimental, then we need to know about that. Okay? That's all I'm asking before you make your decision. This is a, this is a big decision, and it's one that we're probably not gonna have to make for a long time. But we, we need to know the facts and stay in, in the area that we have control over, which are those two items that I just asked for. That's by statute. We don't, we can't just be making up rules and regulations or somebody mentioned about putting down monitoring wells on a solar farm. I'm not exactly sure what that's all about. I don't know that that would even be included in our new zoning regulations, I, I don't think. I don't know. We're talking about the value of property. The Prestons are still going to pay four hundred and twenty-five dollars an acre or whatever it's assessed at now. Is that correct? For grassland?
The assessed value could change, but it will be assessed based on the agriculture.
Based on the agriculture, nothing to do with the solar farm. Nothing to do with the solar farm.
It will not change, commercial will not change.
And I keep asking the question, and I'm not getting an answer. We're, we're concerned about what it's gonna do to the property value next to it. And what's the detriment from that solar farm on your property? If somebody can tell me that, I'd be more than happy to, more than happy to listen to it. So far, I haven't heard a legitimate concern yet. If it were a hog farm next to a building or next to a housing development, I could see that that would be a problem. I don't see it with this one. I don't see it with this one. And I'm, I'm gonna stick to the two items that, that I'm charged with making the decision on. Does it meet zoning requirements? Is it detrimental to the adjoining properties? That's what I'm gonna look at in my decision. Mike, you have anything?
No.
Russ?
I do. I'm looking at the application, the permit here. It's made out to Citula Energy in September, the sixth day of September, twenty twenty-three. And we're back to the thing. I, I do not truly believe that a leasing, lease or can come in and change that. If that's the case, I could lease your backyard and put in a hog farm and then tell you, you can say about it. I can go down and come down and get a permit. Ain't right. It's gotta be the landowners, the only person can get the permit. The permit is right here. And it's not made out to Prestons. And I don't think I can endorse anything that's not made out to the landowner. And that's my biggest gripe. So that's, okay.
All right, any other discussion? If there's no other discussion, record your votes.
And the motion is?
The motion is to deny.
The motion is to deny. A yes vote, a yes vote would.
Would deny it.
Deny it.
Deny it. A no vote would be to, to decline on the, on the motion. Okay, the motion is passed. The permit has been denied. And I'll put it back in the hands of our building zoning director and our legal counsel and Citula and bring us something different, I guess. Okay? Thank you all for your, for your input, folks. We appreciate all the comments, all the concerns. And, and so we'll, we'll go back to square one, pretty much. Okay, thank you very much. All right, with that, I'm going to jump to the, the change that we made and call for an executive session to discuss personnel. And in that session will be the board, Lisa, and county attorney Dave Eubanks.
Is the sheriff still here?
I don't know. I, I haven't seen him.
Could, I, I was just wondering if Sheriff, Sheriff Overman could come in?
For what, for what purpose?
Just right here.
If you think, if it thinks it's necessary, I'm, I'm.
Maybe not. I, I guess I can't think of a, I don't know what I'm trying to, can't get the words, but.
I'm not, I'm not saying not to.
It's okay.
I'm not saying not to. It's, it's a, it's a personnel matter. And if you, if you feel the sheriff needs to be there, then we can certainly have him there.
I don't, I, I can't come up, I just can't come up with.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Are we, are we still doing the talk with Steve tonight as well? We're gonna do an executive session?
Yes, we're gonna do executive session first.
Steve is.
All right, so we, I need a motion to move to executive session at eight twenty-two.
I move that we move into executive session.
I'll second.
Record your votes.
Who was my second?
Mike.
Mike. What, what am I, what am I signing?
I made the motion.
I made, I made the motion. I made the motion.
Oh, I made the second. Mark, you can.
Ken and Mark need to vote.
I just did.
Will you hit it again, please?
Okay. Okay. You got the time at eight twenty-two, Kelly?
What, Ken?
Eight twenty-two. That's the time we got. Thank you.
God, I should've stopped.
Oh, well. We'll try to, we'll try to get through it. We still have a couple items to take care of. There is something I need to talk to you guys about.
Make a motion to come out of executive session.
We have a motion to come out of executive.
I'm just doing a roll call. I didn't have you set up to that.
Okay.
We'll be back at eight forty-nine?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Knapper?
Yes.
Reizig?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Any decisions?
No, not, not in there.
Okay.
Okay. The first one we're going to take into consideration is receive a letter of resignation from Paul Payne.
Okay.
That doesn't require a vote, the way that we have this. We're just basically received, we don't have to approve his resignation.
Yeah, but I gotta find what age you shuffled me to.
Just look at the agenda. Just look at the agenda. And understand that I've already had my first nap before I went to bed. I got one, I just ate something. Thank you, though. Appreciate that. Okay? Anybody have any?
I think I do, okay.
Okay. Next item is discuss and consider appointment of interim public defender. And that would be our, our discussion.
Okay.
So I would need a, I would need a motion, please.
So the, if we're gonna be, the next item talks about the replacement for the public defender.
Discuss, consider appointment to, of an interim, right.
That's the, that's the next item, but the one after that talks about the process of, of hiring another one.
Right.
Okay, I'll, I'll go ahead and just make a motion to table the appointment of interim public defender.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion? Record your votes or just call the roll?
She's got another.
Oh, you've got it up already, okay.
But I'm ready.
Well, I didn't know that, I'm sorry, Kelly.
No, I just, that's what I'm.
Okay.
Okay, hang on. You have five guesses.
Thank you. The next item would be to discuss, consider approval of procedure to replace the public defender.
Yes, Lisa's back there, so.
I would, I would entertain a motion that we, we advertise for the position, for the position of public defender and appoint a committee, a review committee, to do those, do those reviews.
You're entertaining a motion, or that is?
I'm entertaining a motion.
So I would move that we do that and use the same process as what we used the last time. I think, is that?
Did we hire?
Would that be appropriate for you, Lisa?
Did we hire Zell for that?
No, we did it ourselves.
I would, I would add to the motion that we include Zell on.
Or what, Charlie? I don't understand what Zell was even involved. Just to.
Maybe they're a recruiting firm, they'll have, they may have a further reach than us. They may have a candidate pool in mind already. They've got the networking and skills to go out and talk to people on the side if they're interested in something like this, encourage them to apply.
Are you talking?
That's what a recruiting, recruiting firm does.
That's what you're wanting them for recruiting? And we've had, then we're, we've been using them for the county attorney's side for the last year.
For, yeah, but not for county attorney. Only for.
A deputy attorney.
Only for, yeah. But I think the position of public defender may be more enticing than a staff position. That's my, that's my train of thought.
So what you're, what you're asking for is that when we advertise for this position, we include, what'd you go, Zell?
I guess we don't have to include that in the motion.
No. You, you, you.
Ten thousand dollars to retain Zell plus a certain portion of the brochure's wages.
Okay, all right. Then, then what I would suggest is that we advertise, advertise, interview candidates. And if we don't find any suitable candidates for that, then we go back and maybe have to spend the ten thousand. Would that work? Okay. So is that your motion?
Harris has made a motion.
Okay, I'll second.
All right, we have a. Okay. Is there any other discussion? Call, uh, record your votes. Okay, the next item is receive and accept the resignation from Jeff Schladewitz, weed control superintendent. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to receive Jeff Schladewitz's resignation.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. I'll second it.
Any discussion? Record your votes. All right, next item is discuss, consider the appointment of Steve Baird to the interim weed control superintendent.
I'll make a motion to accept Steve Baird as interim.
Is there, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion?
And you have your weed, uh, certificate or whatever, Steve, right?
He's got all the paperwork. Okay, record your votes, please. Okay, thank you. Okay, let's move on. We've got a couple other agenda items to take care of.
Can I say one thing about that? Can you just real short? Uh, with him accepting that, I mean, we, can we make his pay retroactive once we set that, or how we wanna do that? Would that be right, Lisa?
Once, once we just.
I mean, can we make it retroactive now?
We don't know what the pay is going to be yet.
No, that's it. Once we make it, once we set it, let's say it's at the next meeting, we can back it up to whatever.
We can decide that.
Make it retroactive to not deny.
Okay. All right, next item, then, uh, we already talked about the window remodel, time clock plus and payroll process. Anything to add or discuss with that?
You know, I really think we need to discuss this clear pay, paycheck advance system that just got implemented, but that, you know, management accountant just walked down the hall, so, um, I, I just am not happy with, with the process that, um, was decided amongst staff that we were gonna allow employees to, uh, receive paycheck advances through our payroll system. Uh, this board generally opposed the idea a year ago. Um, the concern is also that, you know, this was on a to-do list for a year and was, was just now implemented. I don't really, um, know what took so long. If that was the case, I think, I, you know, I think there's a lot of, um, misremembering of what was discussed in April of twenty-three. Um, what I would like to do is have on the next agenda, uh, an action item to, uh, engage, engage, uh, MIPS and, and set a time and, uh, week or two that they can come out and train our staff on implementing the, uh, or interfacing the payroll with pay, time clock plus system with our payroll processes. Um, I think we should get that up and running as, as soon as the primary is over. Um.
Thank you for remembering that I'm doing something.
I haven't forgotten you, Kelly.
Not hard to remember.
Um, and, uh, yeah, so I, I would like that action item. So, so what I would like for us to know as a board for that action item is, when can they come? How much is it gonna cost? How long do they expect to be here to train? Um, what is the after-go-live support look like? Um, and, um, I think we should be, set a goal, maybe they can help us, maybe MIPS can help us set a goal of when go-live should, should be, um, with our input of when that should be and, and kinda move that forward. Um, so that's what I had for the board, is, yes.
Didn't we also have a committee already set? Aren't you on that committee to help? And act that?
I don't think the committee's been formed.
I thought we did that. I thought you asked, I thought you asked to be on that committee.
Yeah, but I, I.
I think he asked to be on the committee if a committee was formed, but Kelly would be on that committee.
Absolutely.
Or at least her, her payroll clerk would be, um.
Will, would also be.
And so, if this hasn't been formed, Kelly would also know. I know Robert's been out a little bit, but Kelly, was that committee ever formed?
We met, a bunch of us met at the Panhandle District Meeting in Bridgeport. I half-assumed that it was you part of it, gonna be on it. I thought you had mentioned that you wanted to be part of that committee.
I don't remember that, but I, I'm over with that.
Lisa was gonna be on it? We've talked to Derek from MIPS now?
Well, I, I was in that meeting, and what I recall is the officials that were there between the major meetings.
I don't know.
The commissioners did.
Ken was there.
In that meeting?
At that meeting.
Yeah, it was, to me, it was an informational meeting. I.
Is that when we talked about it?
No, this was afterwards, when, when they met with us back on the north side of the building.
Af- after all of our breakaway sessions.
After the lunch.
After the lunch, yeah.
After our breakaway sessions and.
No, I wasn't with them.
Okay. All right, we just get that on the next agenda, we can discuss and move from, from there.
Yes.
All right, uh, public comments. Anybody that wishes to speak to the board at this time?
Yes. I am Mike Meister. I live at twenty-four, twenty-six, Third Avenue in Scotts Bluff. Uh, and I was being considered to be the interim, uh, public defender. And I understand that things were said about me in executive session, not, not been told what those things that were said. I sat here all night in the hopes that if I had some people with, uh, honor, integrity, that they would come and ask me directly if they had questions about my abilities, uh, my background. I've been accused over the years of being a scofflaw, which isn't true. I've been accused of beating my ex-wife, which wasn't true. Um, I have been investigated by the World Herald because I ran for governor. I've been investigated by General Starr because I ran for governor. I've run for attorney general of this state. I've run for county attorney of this county. Um, and I was simply hoping to be given an opportunity to serve this county as the interim public defender. Uh, but apparently I'm not being allowed to even answer any questions or concerns that people have. Uh, that being said, gentlemen, have a good evening. I have a jury trial in the morning. Uh, take care of yourselves. Thanks.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, any, there's nobody else here. You guys are, no, hang on just a minute. I, I've, I've got something to take care of here. Hang on, just a second. Board and staff reports. Do you have anything to add?
Um, so are, just real quick, they done some improvement improvements, technology-wise. It's great. It's, it's hundred percent better. Um, over here, so, um, and, um, Judge T is really useful around, in carpets and stuff.
Okay, I've, and I, I jumped the gun a bit. Board first, anybody on the board have anything to add? It's okay. My fault, not yours. Uh, the one thing I, I, I need to bring up and make everybody aware of, uh, trying to remember, two days, three days ago, I received a phone call from, uh, Guzman, what was her first name?
Jackie.
Jackie.
Jackie Guzman. Uh, she was very upset the way that her associate was treated at the last meeting. I pulled up the video and watched. I didn't see anything that I felt was bad. We asked, we re, we responded to the information that she gave us, as little amount as it was. And, and we responded and asked questions about it. The same thing happened with, she's complaining, she said that her name was brought up quite a bit, and she didn't appreciate that. Well, it was brought up by the gal out here. That said that, that'd be a question for Jackie, which we understood. I thought everybody was very courteous. It appeared to me when I watched, I just watched it this afternoon, which is why I knew I couldn't hear you or.
Then I couldn't have said anything, could I? I couldn't incriminate myself.
Let me, let me finish here. Uh, so she wanted to meet with me one-on-one, and I said, I don't feel comfortable doing that. If you wanna come to a, a, a meeting, get on the agenda, and, and we can discuss the, the things that you're concerned about. Then I get a email from, um, the head guy.
John or?
No.
Rob?
Rob. My mind is, Rob, Rob Iraick.
Yeah.
Wants to meet with me. I said, that's fine. That's fine. Uh, he said, uh, you know, the, the girls have visited with him, and, and he needs to get some things clarified. I said, that's okay. So I'm meeting with him Wednesday at two o'clock at my office.
Who is it?
Rob Iraick. Uh, and if, any one of you would like to attend that with me, I'd be more than, it's, it's fine with me.
I haven't seen the video. Are you gonna be able to have access to that video to show?
You have access to it.
Everybody does. It's on YouTube.
Has Rob looked at the video?
I have no idea. I didn't talk with him. I just responded to his email.
Ask him to watch that before he gets.
No, I, 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 I've got a plan in place here. I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it. I'm not afraid of him at all.
No, no, I just say, he might save him a little trouble.
But, uh, anyway, I wanted to make everybody aware that probably at the next meeting, she's going to get on the agenda, and she's want, going, going to wanna discuss the way that we treated her and the way that we treated her associate that was here at last meeting. And now, and now, the only one I could, I couldn't pull up the one that, uh, that she was here. I, I looked, I kept looking, I couldn't find. It's probably out there, and I don't know how to do it correctly.
We've never talked on that one. She, she comes up. Do you thank her with more courage or come down?
Again, she gave us bits and pieces of information. When asked a question, that little bit turned into this. And it, that's kinda where, where it was. And then, and then she did wanna meet with me one-on-one. And we didn't, we didn't get hooked up. We, we couldn't, for one reason or another. It, it never happened. So she's upset with me because I didn't meet with her one-on-one, but, and so be it.
Well, I agree, I agree with your decision really wholeheartedly on that.
So, anyway, I wanna make everybody aware. I don't know whether she's called anybody else. But be aware that when she comes here at the next meeting, she's probably gonna be loaded with knives, and we have our guns, so, whatever, let's stay happy. Be prepared. Look.
I have four pre approvals from the Henry Bell that need to kind of.
Okay.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything? Charlie, anything?
Um, Naco is looking for a representative to sit on the inheritance tax reform committee. I volunteered Mark Harris. You might have, you might have an email in your inbox. If it doesn't work for you, there's a couple of time commitments, Zoom meetings. If it doesn't work, you can, uh, submit your, um, responses or suggestions via email or through me. That would be fine. Um, but we, we, uh, I can fill you in more on that.
Okay.
Tourism, I really want that meeting to be in the evening. Um, you know, there's lots of other volunteer boards across the nation that meet in the evening. And I think, um, we might get more people who really want to be there. You know, I think we have some hotel people. We've got some industry people that, you know, they stay clocked in while they go to this meeting. It's, they're not really fully invested. Um, and, um, that's not the majority. By no means is that the majority, but, um, I think we may get a few more super-invested community champions, um, if, if it was in the evenings when they don't have to clock out from their unrelated tour job to come to the meeting. Um, so that's just my two cents, and I do think it needs to be here in the commissioner meeting. I feel very strongly about that. There's just some, um, there's, there's a lot of influence at the Legacy of the Plains, uh, museum, and I'm also not opposed, not very much in favor of finding a new office location for Brenda. Um, and, um, I would just, uh, those are my, those are my thoughts there. Um, that's all I got.
Okay. I did, I, I wanna thank all, everybody here, you guys, uh, for our patience tonight with the topic that came up. It could've gotten really ugly. I don't know that it did. I think everybody had good questions, good concerns.
It were.
Whatever.
Good tone.
What, whatever it is, and we'll have to move forward with it. And, uh, anyway, thank you all for your, your patience. Nobody punched anybody, and it was, it was, it was, it was nice. So, uh, okay, other than that, seeing no other business, I'm gonna go home and go to bed.
Please sign this, Charlie.
Sign some, yeah, of course.